We will call the meeting of the Shreveport Council now to order. Councilman Bradford will give the indication and Councilman Jenkins will leave us in the place of the lead.
Rest in God we come now, Lord, thanking you for this day, thank you for all your blessings. Come, Lord, in this meeting, meeting of the Shreveport City Council, asking for your favor and your grace upon this meeting. Bless us, Lord, in our deliberations. We desire, Lord, to be good servants and stewards of your people, so direct our hearts and minds, that what we do here today will be pleasing in thy sight. Bless the mayor, bless council members, and, Lord, bless this city in a special way. We need you amongst us, Lord, to things that are happening, that we need your presence. Be with us in all that we do. In thy name we pray. Amen.
Go ahead and face the flag and keep the flag.
Let me lead this to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk?
Councilman Bradford.
President.
Councilman Emerson.
Here.
Councilman Jenkins.
President.
Councilman Corvus. Councilman Corvus. Councilman O'Malley. And Councilman Boe.
Here. Here. Tomorrow I will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting. This time, council members, I'd like to, Mayor, I'd like to bring up those nominees, confirmations that we have here so that they might not have to stay the whole council. Would you please call them up for me, Mayor?
Absolutely, absolutely. We're going to ask Mrs. Kristen Brown from Brown Builders, who was recommended by Community Foundation for the Redevelopment Authority Board, if she will come. Thank you, Ms. Brown, for being here today.
Hi.
State your name and your address, please, for the record.
My name is Kristen Brown. I live at 8625 East Wilderness Way in Shreveport.
Okay. Any questions for the council?
I have one, but not necessarily directed at Kristen. She and I are friends, and I'm very glad to see her stepping up to the plate. You know, we need quality folks like you on our boards and committees, particularly this board, which I believe is just starting.
Yeah, absolutely.
So, you know, and I don't know, and maybe there's more of a question for the mayor and the administration, but what kind of training or what kind of guidance are we giving them to start this process?
Okay, and that is a question for the mayor.
That is a question.
Actually, we have provided them with, first of all, the legislation, because it is so new, and we've also referred them to look at what other authorities are doing throughout our state, and just, you know, more our state than anything else, to see, you know, what others are doing and what kind of progress others are making. And we also looked within their backgrounds, because each of the six organizations that had to submit to the mayor three names, and then I were able to critique those names and kind of just look to see who would be a good fit. But there were six organizations that you may be familiar with from the legislation that we had to choose from, and then I have three appointments that we can do. But we've given them that law, and we've also encouraged them to look at other authorities and how they operate. And even though we don't have some of the same kinds of pieces of legislation that some of the others have within our states, we think that we're able to still make some gains with developing and eliminating blight and redevelopment, because we have other organizations within our city that are already doing a lot of development. And so we think that it's going to be a good beginning, and then once we get the appointment, once I make the appointment and the council confirms, then we're going to have a meeting with these folk, and then we will be able to have a more robust discussion, and then they get to set the table on their officers and what direction they'd like to take, and we'll provide them with additional information on what redevelopment authorities are doing. Does that answer?
That does answer. And so, follow-up question is, when do you anticipate the, is it nine members total?
It is.
Nine members total.
Yes, nine members.
And obviously, there's some criteria about certain backgrounds, right? Didn't they have to have one that was?
Well, this one is more the recommendations from the various agencies.
From the various organizations.
Got you. When is it envisaged that they will kind of be organized to have their first meeting, we have the nine names, you know?
Well, we don't have their names yet. We're still working on those.
That's what I'm saying.
As soon as we get the nine names, then Ms. Tari Bradford will pull them together, and we've already made that clear, and then we can begin deliberations on how to proceed in helping to redevelop within our community. But we've bringing so many now, we'll bring some more at the next council meeting. We hope we'll be able, some people were out of town on vacation, so we weren't able to get, you know, everybody, but we hope to have most of them ready to go within the next month, and then we'll be, we've been trying to get this done for two, two and a half years.
Yes, ma'am.
And so, we hope to get it kicked off this year, in the fall, at least by fall, we'll have something in place.
I have a project that I'm interested in pursuing, and I don't know exactly, that's why I'm asking about the timing, but I've talked to you offline about that afterwards.
Okay.
But that's the nature of my...
Thank you, sir. We appreciate it. Any?
Do you have a question? Councilman? Oh, I again want to say thanks so much for being able to serve on this, Kristen. I think you have a unique set of skills that will really be helpful as this organization starts up. You have great expertise, and you work well with groups as well, so I'm really happy to see, you know, you as one of the choices here. This is something I've done a lot of research over the years. It's in our master plan, and it's something that has been discussed, and so I'm really happy to see these appointments moving forward. I think the mayor's absolutely right, that while this body may not be empaneled with a full set of resources at the time, which you mainly are going to bring to the table at the beginning, is your understanding and ability to develop a plan of action that can kind of take those available resources that already exist and kind of make the most of them and start to identify where CIRA can be helpful in the, in the future, and how they can focus their actions in a way that, you know, we can get broader buy-in for it. So, really appreciate you offering to serve on that and the others who are appointed.
Thank you, Jeff.
I too want to say thank you for taking the opportunity to serve, and we appreciate you doing that very much.
Of course, thank you for the honor.
Mayor, who's, who is next?
Okay, thank you, Ms. Brown. We appreciate you. The next one, Mr. Chairman, is Mr. Alfred Darrell Johnson, and he was recommended by the CPAs here in Shreve, with the Shreveport Chapter of the Society of Louisiana Certified Accountants, and so Mr. Johnson is present today. Thank you for being here.
Thanks, Alfred Darrell Johnson. Live at 1046 Gabriel's Turn in Shreveport.
Any question? Again, wanted to just thank, because the variety of organizations that were picked does bring people together from different subject areas that bring a lot to the table, and certainly accountants know a lot about where it is appropriate to have money in various projects, and these redevelopment authorities oftentimes look at public-private partnerships and ways that people work together, and it's going to be important to have people that understand what is and is not appropriate in those kind of situations, and really appreciate you.
And we provided Mr. Johnson with the same information. He's gone, he's going to go and do, he's already started doing his homework on other redevelopment authorities, am I correct, Mr. Johnson?
Correct.
You gave me that, that look.
That's a CPA look right there.
A little humorous.
You never commit to him, right?
Yeah, yeah. Don't, but anyway, he is equipped and ready to be the CPA on this group and help us move forward. Any other questions?
Great selection. Let me ask, Mayor, regarding the terms, the staggered terms, have they been identified of whose length of their terms?
Let me tell you, we're going to, because the law was not detailed and didn't, wasn't very specific about how long the term, they simply said that they need to be staggered. So, we're going to start these four out with three years, and then we've got another group that's coming. We've got five more appointments to make, and we'll stagger those so that everybody doesn't come up at the same time, and try to, you know, kind of be in concert with what the law says we have to be.
Sure.
Okay? So, we, when we point some others, they may have different terms than what these four have, but we decided to go ahead and do these four and start out with three years for these four, and then I'm going to bring back to you all five other people, and they'll have, some of them will have different terms.
Is the three years the maximum, or is...
No, sir, it did not, it did not articulate that in the law. So, we're going to go back and look at some of the details. We actually did ask those questions, and we, it just doesn't say in the law how many, what's the maximum or anything like that. So, we're going to go back and see what the intent was and see how we should proceed before I bring in the five.
And I appreciate that, and I concur with the other councilmen in that the important thing is to get started, and then we can work our term limits down the road.
Absolutely, Mr. Johnson. Okay.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Our next one, Mr. Chairman, is Mrs. Jenarica Fleming. I think I'm pronouncing that right. Jenarica Fleming is from the, she's recommended by the Boss Association, and I want to appoint her as one of the persons to be on this CIRA board. Ms. Fleming?
Good afternoon. My name is Jenarica Flemings. I reside at 3314 West Timer Street Streets in Shreveport, Louisiana.
Thank you again. As similar as what I mentioned to the, she's an accountant, is that, you know, this is a sort of a, a new discussion or a broadening of the discussion, that I think is really important to bring value back to the core of our city and making sure that we have the highest tax base, you know, getting properties out of levy title situations, and, you know, it has some special powers that, that are really helpful in returning duplicated properties into commerce and things like that, and that can bring a lot of value into our neighborhoods. It can also, you know, instill a better sense of community in our neighborhood, and so it's going to be really important work that they're doing, and we really appreciate your service to this board.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you.
She's one of our young attorneys, doing a great job. And our next one is Mr. Justin Sevier, and he was recommended, I'll call him up, Justin, by the Home Builders Association of North Louisiana, and of course, he is really doing an outstanding job in his career, so we're proud to have him come aboard.
Thank you, Justin Sevier, 558 Dunnmore Drive, Shreveport, Louisiana, 706.
And again, certainly, this is a good group of, I mean, I know the process is a little unusual to have all these different organizations nominate, but I mean, so far, I'm seeing a great group that's come out of it, you know?
Absolutely.
Because Justin certainly has had great experience building developments that, you know, are maybe not necessarily in the center of our city, but something, in fact, very much the opposite, but, but, you know, working with a master plan development like that, that's going to be something that's a possibility in other locations in our community that we may not have thought of in the past, and so, you know, we hope that y'all are able to identify opportunities for other home builders to get involved in things like that.
Absolutely.
Appreciate what you bring to the table.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions from Mr. Sevier? All right.
Thank you, sir.
All right, thanks.
Thank you so much, Justin. All right. And our last one for today is Mr. Jonathan Reynolds, and he is the appointment that I want to make, who is going to be replacing Bishop Lawrence Brandon, L. Lawrence Brandon, on the airport authority. And of course, you, we've provided you with all of the resumes of each of these individuals, and we want to thank Mr. Reynolds for coming this afternoon.
And I want to be the first to welcome you, because you live in my district.
Absolutely.
I'm delighted that you're taking this task and volunteering to serve.
Thank you.
I want to thank you so much for that.
Thank you. Again, my name is Jonathan Reynolds. I'm in your district. My address is 2310 Sommersworth Drive, Shreveport, Louisiana.
I got a few emails for you. I've got about 50 or 60 in my inbox right now that I'm having to forward on. Just kidding. Coming in at a fun time.
I understand.
Yeah, you know, you didn't become a bishop for nothing, right?
No. Any other questions for Mr. Reynolds? I just want to say that Mr. Reynolds is stepping up at a time, and the challenges are there. However, he flies quite a bit in and out of Shreveport and has expressed a desire to, to help make our community better with the, at the airport. And of course, he serves now as vice president of commercial banking, relations manager, and because he flies a lot, he wants to see that airport be successful, so that he brings that to the table.
Well, and he's certainly exhibited great leadership in your role with the African American Chamber of Commerce.
He is.
You know, a lot of people were impressed with the outreach and, you know, your ability to kind of grow membership in that organization.
Thank you.
A good job.
Appreciate what you, what you did.
Very visible member of our team.
Yes, very visible.
That is very true. Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
There's a lot of volunteering. Any, any other questions?
Just a, just a great resume. Resume is really good. I might have to read it twice just to make sure I do. That was a real good, great resume, so glad to have you, Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for allowing me to do that. Some of them have to get back to their daytime jobs. Thank you so much for doing that.
Does any other council?
Yes, sir.
No announcements today. We'll have some tomorrow. Thank you.
Mr. Green? Properties stand. Anybody have a question for him?
He's not here today, sir.
Not here, is that?
Who's representing?
Who's representing him?
Mr. Norman, sir.
Yeah, he is here. Anybody have a question? Seeing none, Mr. Norman, thank you for your service. And I believe that's all we have right now, reports. Mr. Sweeney, tomorrow, I will be wanting to visit with you concerning your operation hours, so I'll speak tomorrow about that, okay? There's no public hearing, Mr. Crawford?
Not that we're aware of.
We're going to be in a resolution today?
No, sir.
Tomorrow, maybe?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. And we have nobody that wants to speak here on public comments and confirmations. We've taken care of consent agenda. Mr. Crawford, let's continue for the items to be adopted.
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman. We're under to adopt ordinances and resolutions under the consent agenda legislation. Resolution 115 authorizes the mayor to execute an act of release of a sewer main servitude in the Southern Heights subdivision, unit number 12, in section 24, T-17 North, R-14 West. This is for Home Federal Bank. This was a 1927 servitude for sewer that has since been abandoned, and they're trying to replat that for future development. 116 accepts dedication of a Sweet Leaf Avenue and Woodsong Lane right-of-way in Providence Phase 2, Unit H. Resolution 117 is a resolution accepting a dedication of Sweet Leaf Avenue and Fairwoods Drive right-of-way in Providence Phase 2, Unit G. Resolution 118 accepting dedication of Piper Drive and Beechcraft Way right-of-way in Lucian Fields Estate Phase 1, Unit B. Resolution 119 authorizes the acceptance of a U.S. Department of Commerce Economic Development Administration grant. This provides $500,000 to the downtown airport for Susla's airframe and power plant program. And resolution 122 is to celebrate and commemorate the life of Bobby Wiggins for his important musical contributions which enhance the culture and spiritual life of Shreveport citizens.
Okay, any questions? Mr. Councilman Jenkins?
Okay, number one on 115. So, was there ever a sewer underneath this?
I don't think it actually says that in there. It says we're abandoning it right of way. I have Robert come up. He's been here since 1927.
So, he's been here all along?
He'll probably tell you.
He dug the ditch and put it in.
Councilman, there used to be sewer main there at Home Federal. When they developed that lot, they relocated the sewer main.
So, they have relocated it?
That is correct, so they could build and develop on that property.
Okay. And so, did they, as part of this whatever contract or agreement, did they indemnify us for that?
The sewer main was abandoned in place. It was filled with flowable grout, and we requested a whole harmless agreement with them over filling of that with grout instead of removing it completely.
Okay, so it wasn't removed completely, it was filled in?
No. It was filled with flowable field grout.
Okay. The only reason I'm saying is, we had a problem four years ago with the, quote, abandoned sewer line that may or may not, there's an issue about whether we had been indemnified or not.
Yes, sir.
So, but in this case, we think we've resolved that by a whole harmless agree.
That is part of that requirement, yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, now, the building, the airport building, I don't think this is used, so I'm sorry.
118, yes.
118.
119.
119, sir.
Yep.
So, that building, we took it fr, who owned the building before we got it?
The Army reserved it.
The Army Reserve, or Department of Defense, or some entity?
Correct.
And then they gave it to us?
That's correct.
And are we going to rent it to Susla?
That is correct. We're going to refurbish it, and then we're going to consolidate Susla's operation and downtown airport into that facility. Right now, they're kind of spread around in a number of different buildings.
And I guess the question is, would we consider selling it, or, I mean, because we would have to maintain it, right?
That's correct. And, and I don't know that we can sell the building. It, it was deeded to us from the U.S. government, so I believe part of the stipulation was that we would not do that, so it is on airport property.
Because I mean, I just, us having more stuff to maintain is something that I'm trying to come up with other solutions. Not that this isn't a good idea and a good tenant to have there and whatever else.
Yeah.
But is there a way that we can get out of the, I'll say, maintenance business in terms of a long-term lease or something where there's now?
Well, you know, one of the things that, and of course, we're constantly, from the administration side of the house, trying to make sure that we don't get the burden of having maintained a lot of stuff, because we got too much now. But with this, we feel like the benefits outweigh that issue in terms of the fact that, first of all, it's going to actually do some, really, we think, it's going to help us prepare young people to be able to go into their, you know...
Aviation careers?
Aviation career, and, and also, they're going to be paying lease on it, and we're going to take that and reinvest it to keep it maintained. We were able to go out last year, and we found this grant, wrote for it last year, was hoping we would get it last year, but then we had a change of guard at federal level, so we had to wait and keep pushing. So, they, you know, they gave us, not gave us, but we wrote the grant and pushed it and pushed it till we got the $500,000 to help us actually rehab this building. But we think that program through Southern University is going to really reap a lot of big benefits in that we're going to be preparing young people for aviation, and that's how you develop, I believe, in a community. You got to, you got to provide some things for, for the people who come behind you to be able to, you know, sustain and have a good life in the community, so we think it's going to pay big dividends. And then we're going to take the lease money and keep it maintained.
And I'm entirely supportive of the whole thing.
Okay, all right.
And they are definitely spread out all over the place. That is very obvious for anybody that's down there.
Yes.
So, I mean, I'm all for it. I'm just specifically on the idea of us maintaining. That was my only question.
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Any other discussion? Mr. Crawford?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. These are resolutions on second reading and final passage. Resolution 109 authorizes the execution of a cooperative endeavor agreement between KDBS LLC and the City of Shreveport. This is for the upcoming Fourth of July festivities down on the riverfront. City's contribution is $33,559. Resolution 110 stating the City of Shreveport's endorsement of Market Street, Shreveport LLC, to participate in the benefits of Louisiana Restoration Tax Abatement Program. This is for the new development of 609 Market Street, where they have a $10.6 million investment. The deferred property tax will be $40,501 annually for five years. Resolution 111 authorizes the mayor to execute an acceptance of an act of donation between the City of Shreveport and AS 130 Cantforby Marketplace LP, hereafter called Owner, enacting herein through Stephen D. Alvis, manager for the private water mains located within Cantforby Drive and Fluentolus Road, per plat titled Cantforby Marketplace and related facilities. Resolution 112 authorizes the mayor to execute an acceptance of the donation between the City of Shreveport and Briscoe Properties LLC, hereafter called Owner, enacting herein through steward A. Briscoe III, manager for the private streets drainage and water improvements located in Long Lake 22 and related facilities. And resolution 114 authorizes the mayor to execute an intergovernmental agreement and a cooperative endeavor agreement between the City of Shreveport, Louisiana, and the Town of Blanchard. This is for inspection and permitting services.
Mr. Chairman? Yes. Resolution 110 needs to be postponed. We'll have a public hearing at the next meeting, after which it can be announced. Okay, postpone.
110. Postpone, so they can have a public hearing. It's required by law.
I have a question.
Yes.
Okay. So, I understand Mr. Alvis, he has got, I assume he leased part of the building from developer, but I don't understand why he is the one that's giving the water mains to the city.
You're on 111, Mr. Johnson.
I'm on 111.
Okay.
Is it, I mean, you see, I mean, he's a tenant in the, as far as I understand it, I mean...
He may be the acting agent for the owner. Tenant improvements don't usually include sewer mains.
The water main was, he's a part-owner of the developer of Cantforby from that standpoint, too, so that's why he is in the act of, as part of the donation.
Good. Didn't know that. Okay. Thank you, sir. Please proceed with the introductions of resolutions.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, introduction of resolutions not to be adopted prior to July 11, 2017. Resolution 120 authorized the execution of a cooperative endeavor agreement with Arc-La-Tex Regional Air Services Alliance. This is $200,000 that we're receiving from ROSA to promote the new Charlotte route. Resolution 121 authorizes the mayor to accept an in-kind donation of a gazebo and landscaping valued at $92,030 to be constructed in Oakland Cemetery, from the Oakland Cemetery Preservation Society to the City of Shreveport to be utilized by the city and its citizens.
I was just going to say on that Oakland one, that's a really great group, is dedicating that as a, it's a gazebo, but it'll be a little more, it's kind of a meeting place in the middle of that, which was Shreveport's original park.
Beautiful.
So, I mean, it's really a very pretty site, and that's going to make it a lot more usable, so really thankful to private citizens for stepping forward and raising their money and handling the construction, and this is just a great deal for us, so I want to thank them.
Mr. Crawford?
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, we're into introduction of ordinances not to be adopted prior to July 11, 2017. Order 69 amends the 2017 capital improvements budget. This is for four water projects and three sewer projects. Resolution 70 amends the 2017 general fund budget appropriating funds unauthorized therein. This is $150,000 transferred to patrol officer overtime in the Shreveport Police Department budget, with $150,000 from operating reserve. Order 71, zoning case number C-50-17, an ordinance emitting chapter 106 of the Code of Ordnances, the City of Shreveport zoning ordinances by rezoning property located on the south side of West 70th, 295 feet west of Club Pines Road, Shreveport, Cattle Parish, Louisiana, from R1D Urban One Family Residential District and R1DE Urban One Family Residential District, extended use to R1D HUD Urban One Family Residential Planning Unit Development District. And resolution, order 72, also a zoning case, number C-75-16. This is an ordinance emitting chapter 106 of the Code of Ordnances, the City of Shreveport zoning ordinances by rezoning property located on the east side of Monk House Drive, 1629 feet north of Liba Street, Shreveport, Cattle Parish, Louisiana, from B1C1 under the UDC Buffer Business District to B2C2 under the UDC Neighborhood Business District.
Any questions? Mr. Chairman, I have one regarding 17, which is reasonable, but is there any specific timeframe regarding overtime charges?
When you say any specific timeframe?
I mean, I'm just trying to see how much overtime would it could absorb, $150,000. So, is this, is this initiative going to run any, any, like, days or months that overtime would be expended?
Let me tell you how we're doing at Council, Mr. Bradford, thank you for asking that question. We already have, money's budgeted, but we wanted to add to that, because we're already doing overtime, but if, if there's a need for us to add more, we'll be coming back to you. But right now, we're just gonna run it until we can see some of the curve in, in crime, and also, to make sure that we can keep it down. So, if we see where there's a need for us to come back to the council to move additional funding, we'll come back. But we're just gonna run, right now, we don't have a timeline, we're just gonna keep going with overtime we already have and adding this to it. I did speak with the chief and his staff about what they thought they would, would need, if, if, you know, they needed more, and they're always gonna try to do more. But we do, you know, we already have money allocated for overtime, we just want to add to that pot, and if we see there's a need, we'll come back to you.
I should know the question, Mayor, and several, several weeks ago, I think, one of our work sessions, I mentioned that Commissioner Stephen Jackson had mentioned that there was some...
Yes, sir.
Overtime allocation from the parish commission. Did you, was there any follow-up on that?
Yes, sir, I, I sent him a letter, sure did.
And?
I have not gotten, I have not gotten a response.
You haven't gotten a response?
No, sir, I, I actually have the letter that I sent to them and, and email, and I have not got a response on that yet, so, I can always follow up again.
Well, I, I mean, if, if that's, if it's available, like, you said it was in a public session, I was wondering if we could, because this would be a good time to...
Would be.
Know what, how much it would be, and put it a part of the overall allocation for overtime, and we would...
Absolutely.
Police would have a better idea on how they can extend...
Right.
Overtime.
I, I tell you, I, I followed up within two days after you, you made that statement.
Okay.
And sent him an email to the parish administrator, and he was not aware of any budgeted items for that, that's what he told me.
Oh, the administrator was not aware of such allocation?
Yes, sir, that, that was what he told me. So, but anyway, I did follow up, within two days, and I, I have that email, I can shoot it to you.
No, I, 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 I don't question your...
Okay, right.
Statement, I'm just wondering if, if it was, if it was done...
Yeah, I followed up.
Through, through, through their legislation, then the administrator would not have known that.
He, he should have, I mean, he's the one who's in charge of it, well, anyway, we did follow up, sir.
Okay, do that, Mayor, and I, and...
I did follow up, and I, and I'll go back again and see if...
But you had, you got no response from even Stephen Jackson, did you include him in the email?
Yes, sir, he was included.
And he did not respond either?
Yes, sir, he did, and I need to talk to you about that offline.
Okay, well, I mean, I, I'm not worried about his personality, I'm worried about the money, so, if...
So, so are we.
If we can...
So are we.
And I'd be happy to talk to you, but, you know, I don't wanna interfere if it's a, if it's an operational issue where, but I would certainly ask him to explain his statement as relates to that was money that was available through the parish commission for the Shreveport Police Department in overtime allocation. I would, I would, I would certainly like to know his explanation of how to, where, why would he say that if the administrator didn't know anything about it, but we'll, we'll, we'll deal with that.
Yes, sir, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And the one on, on, I'm sorry, on the, still on seven, so, the, the one fifty is strictly for overtime, and that's it?
I'm sorry?
The one, that one, that one hundred fifty is strictly for overtime?
Yes, sir, strictly for overtime, for patrol, and I wanna, I wanna specify that.
I mean, that's what I'm saying, patrol.
Yes, for patrol.
That's what I was...
Absolutely, now, we have overtime funding for patrol, we have overtime funding for other quality of life activities, but this is strictly for patrol.
And be aware, too, council members, there, there's money allocated by the mayor, she said by the, by the, by the council for overtime to cover vacations, sick leave, those types of things. This hundred and fifty thousand dollars is specifically dedicated to put additional patrols on the street. Addition to what we already have in place, which is what the other overtime supplements, when you have police officers who are off, this, this extra funding is to provide additional patrols, in addition to what we already have out there on a daily basis.
And since we're on the subject, is this, uh, within the press conference this morning, there was, um, statements regarding more collaborative approach to, to, for this issue? This, the Shreveport Police is a component of overtime. Was there any conversation with the sheriff department providing any, any type of patrolling yet?
We had those conversations, yes.
Okay.
We certainly did.
Okay.
And we'll be glad to provide funding to anybody who's able to provide, you know, law enforcement personnel.
But has there been no commitment to adding any additional entities within, within the Shreveport Police, I mean, Shreveport, uh, city got, uh, limits to do any patrolling from any outside entities, is that right?
Not that I'm aware of. I know we've offered to pay, you know, but I, but I'm, I was not in sitting on the, the last conversation, but we did offer to pay, I did when I met, so, but if they have, you know, extra personnel that, that they can put in to, for patrol, now, they always, I mean, they're already doing a lot of stuff together in the communities to curb crime, not necessarily patrolling, but I think we do have people out there, but those conversations are pretty limited in that we are, it's risky when you, when you, when you, when you discuss those on a public forum, and I'll be glad to, to tell you offline why.
Well, I, I certainly, I appreciate any, certainly we want confidentiality where it's needed, but council would appreciate any information that you can share with us. I think after this, after the, after the press conference, the expectations from citizens has gone up in regards to, let's see how we gonna collaborate if those agencies that were represented...
Right.
Would be assisting in sort of, not only eradicating, but, but preventive measures in dealing with this, these issues.
Absolutely, right, and, and they're already doing a lot of it, and we've been trying to say that, but that, that, that doesn't always fall on good ears, but we, we've already been working with all of the, the ones you saw there this morning, we already doing stuff with those people, but they are also willing to, uh, do more, and so, my expectations are very high also.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah.
Mayor?
Yes.
Uh, I'd like to say this in council meeting, and I wanna encourage all the council members, Chief Crock stated in the media that community leaders and elected officials often ride patrol. I didn't quite understand, but I took him at heart, I rode patrol the other night from midnight to about four hours in my district, and, and it was very eye-opening to me. Also, yesterday at two o'clock, we had two cars, auxiliary officers, and two different cars to go out and patrol, I've not heard that before, so that tells me, citizens across Shreveport, that we are doing some things different, and we are putting some, more than just talk, we're actually putting some things in place, so I wanted to share that, but that, council members, I encourage each one of you to do just that.
And was that, did you get that in an email, or where did you get this information that?
Chief Crock, it was on Facebook, I believe it's Architect's homepage.
Keel Radio posted that.
And Keel Radio posted also, so anyway, I did ride four hours at midnight that night, and it was very eye-opening as to what's going on, we had a little crime around close to my house, and just wanted to get the feel on it, but anyway, I encourage all the council members to do that.
Okay, sounds good, and, and of course, he, he's, he's been doing, just to say, he's been, he's been, it's kinda like doing a road show, he's going from different media outlets, we getting ready to do some more radio time, and we've done a lot of television already, just trying to educate our publics about what's going on and, and how they too can also help, so, just know that those conversations will still continue, and he'll still be going at, you know, to various stations and media outlets and community meetings along with other police officers, we're gonna continue those efforts.
Mayor, let me say one other thing, I learned on that going down patrol station, we now have captains on them.
Yes.
And I think that was a great move on his part, we have them on each, I think we call them area commanders, but I want citizens to know that, because he's, Chief Crock said today that when we hear misinformation, we need to confront it, and so how we as members of the council be able to do that is we get good information, and so I, I appreciate anything that the police shares with us, that the IO officer puts and everything on the, to us, and we're able to let citizens know facts instead of this hearsay stuff.
And, and actually, the chief provided each of you probably two months ago, you know, that, that strategy plan that he gave, when Councilman Bowman had his public safety meeting, and we brought a copy to every council member, that information is in that booklet.
Yeah.
And we talk about it as he goes and talks to various media outlets, so if you'll go back and review that, you'll see some of the other things that he's put in place since he's been chief.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
My last statement is, in, uh, one of the issues, and I didn't need it addressed this morning regarding response time for, for, for citizens who call in, if that could be a part of the equation in, in...
Yes.
Expediting response time, people say we call, you know, Chief really exhorted and encouraged call-ins when they see suspicious activity, but, but the people that I'm hearing from are saying that they call, but because the police don't get there timely, that the perpetrator has done their thing and left, so if they can speed up that time, I think that would also be a deterrent for some things.
And I think they, I think they're looking at all of those kinds of things, we have probably sixty-two thousand households in this city, and we don't have sixty-two thousand officers, so we can't always be everywhere, but a lot of times that does depend, and I think he strikes explained that, it does depend sometimes on the priorities, if we've got, you know, violence going on or car wrecks, and people try to get to them, and then they prioritize what they do, but they are looking at trying to make sure the response time is, is even better.
But, but high call volume has an effect on it, you plan for X number of people on patrol, and then that night you have a, just blown out of the water on high call volume, so that's...
Yes, yes, a lot of that has to do with it, got a lot of dynamics out there, but...
And so they prioritize it.
But I'd say, Mr. Chairman, but my concern is that if we're going to ask the citizens to engage us...
Yes, yes.
Yeah, you're right.
We, we need to be prudent and responsive to their, to their call, because if we don't, they're gonna think that it's...
That's right.
It's, it's, it's just, not, not, you know, not serious, so, I'm just saying, if we get calls from citizens regarding an incident or some suspicion, then we...
Yes.
We need to encourage, be encouraged...
Absolutely.
Encouraging them by showing up.
And we think more patrol with this, more overtime money for the more patrols will help us actually close some of those gaps, Councilman Bradford.
Okay. I just wanted to...
Just rest there.
Thank you.
Mr. Crock?
We're into property standards now, I believe. Do we have one?
No, we didn't do on second reading, sir.
Is some second reading?
Um, hold on just a second, I have to scroll.
RD.
All right, I was trying to get us out of here early, Mr. Chairman.
I'm with you.
Ordinances on second reading and final passages, the numbers are assigned to ordinance numbers, ordinance sixty-six declares certain city property to be surplus property, order sixty-seven authorizes the mayor to execute a lease of city-owned property to Lone Star Coaches and to otherwise provide with respect there, too, that's where a new slip at the new intermodal facility once it opens, and then ordinance sixty-eight amends the two thousand seventeen budget for the general fund appropriating the funds authorized therein.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Order sixty-seven will need to be postponed for emergency.
Order sixty-seven postponed?
Yes, sir.
Why?
That was...
I have to advertise, advertise fifteen minutes. Uh, quick question, and this does not require the narrow to get up, but, so is Lone Star going to provide a shuttle to an Amtrak stop? Interesting, thank you.
That's very interesting.
That's good, I wanna make sure I read that correctly.
Okay, any other discussion?
Yeah, he can come up and discuss if he likes.
Did you want Mr. Washington to come up?
Apparently, apparently, other people, he, he nodded, yes.
But you got your answer, didn't you?
I'm very satisfied, but he, he keeps, he's all the way up here.
Might as well.
Apparently, there's more interest than just me.
Lone Star is actually the service that provides the Shreveport Regional Airport now, uh, it's the three-way service that, that comes into the airport, same service we serve the intermodal terminal.
And then, but, I thought Lone, okay, now...
Lone Star has a contract with Amtrak three-way service to provide service in this area.
I got you, but now, for some reason, I thought they were the ones that did the shuttle between our airport and Longview or somebody else's airport.
That was the actual Amtrak station in, in, I think it's Marshall, Longview.
Marshall.
Very Marshall.
Thank you.
I hope we won't need it after a while, I have to think come to my head.
Mr. Chairman?
I didn't know it came as close as Marshall.
Uh, I'm not aware, any table legislation has to be removed from the table, and we're now under property standards appeals, we have one.
Definitely got one. Mr. Crock?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon again.
Uh, we've got one appeal today, seventeen twenty-two Arlington Avenue, this is Councilman, Councilman Bradford's district, we have made several attempts to contact the, the owner of the property, and have not been successful at that, but anyway, I'll go through the pictures and show you what we have.
Mr. Chairman, I've been in, in contact with property standards over the last couple of days regarding this property, uh, this was actually a postponement to give him an opportunity to show some good faith efforts in rehabbing this property, but since our last postponement, there's been no word, I know the property standards has been trying to contact the gentleman, I tried to contact the gentleman, to no avail, I actually went to buy the property, and it's gonna lead me to a public comment, but not, not now, in that, since there has been no response, no interest from the owner to contact us back or show us any type of interest, I'm gonna move that we will adhere to the recommendation of property standards, and that is for demolition. That's our move, Mr. Chairman.
What do you think, Mr. Crock?
Chairman, it ain't like we just had to contact him over two or three days, this has been a long time, this is, I think it's maybe the third month, that no, no communications from him has happened, I went by the property, there's a scene of them abandoned, that I, I see no, no kind of activity that has been going on over there for, for a long time, so, he has opportunity to be notified, and he could appeal, I guess, but, but I'm, I'm making this motion with reservations, because it's probably not the worst property in that area, but yet, he's been cited, it's in the process, so I have no, no other choice but to at least move forward with the, with the, with the recommendation from the staff.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion, my Councilman Bradford, second.
We have someone on this, Mr. Crock.
You need to speak?
No, I don't see my name on it.
Any discussion? All in favor, please vote.
No, it's happy the second, maybe I have to sign my hand, sir.
And it passes. I have a question, you get the motion to the second on that? No other appeals?
Other appeals.
No others in DC or other field, right, Mr. Thompson?
That's right.
All right, any reports from officers, board, service committees?
It's a matter of public...
Public safety tomorrow at one thirty.
Chairman, let me ask the administration, welcome, respond, several months ago, I requested some statistics regarding the fair share in regards to American properties and curmats, have, have that information been ascertained?
We have that, Mr. Bradford, I can get with you this week on it, I spoke briefly with the clerk, I was getting a little more clarification on exactly what you want, but I have, I think, what would be responsive to your request at this point, so I've spoken with Karen Barnes in the parish here, I've got the latest numbers to, to help you get a broad picture of all the parties.
That's what I need, I, I mean, when I, I'm ready... That's what I need. I, I mean, when I, I'm ready to set another meeting, but I want to be clear on that aspect of the, uh, fair share before I engage my committee as well as the public. So I will be happy to meet, speak with you regarding those.
All right, thank you. Mr. Thompson, there's a quick report.
We had certain appointments by the mayor. All of the people who were appointed appeared today, and you've heard from them, and, uh, we have no other information that's in our report.
There's nothing else? Any other council member would like to speak?
I wouldn't, Chairman.
Okay. Councilman Bradford?
Okay, I have several issues that I want to bring up. Mayor, has there been any, uh, uh, initiation of the overlays project that we allocated the funds to earlier last month? He was gonna, he was gonna identify some, some streets in our districts to start the, uh, the overlay program for streets.
Yes. I can bring Mr. Westerman up. Uh, I'm, I'm sure that he has looked at, uh, because we, we're continuing the overlay streets.
I'm saying.
Every day, whenever it's not raining, we've had a lot of rain here recently. But yes, yes, we, we, it, do you, did you have some specific streets that you were talking about?
Well, there, there was some in my district that we, that we discussed, and then we had some options, alternative streets.
Yes.
So I, I was wondering if, if any, if any activity has started in my district regarding some of these streets.
We're taking bids on the general fund overlay program. We're in the process of awarding contract on that right now. We are building the list to make sure that we have all the streets that were identified under that program. We are also taking bids on the special revenue fund asphalt program that is going out now, and we will be receiving bids on that.
So the streets that, that will be subjected as, as these overlays has been identified?
Yes, sir, they have. But again, as always, like the mayor explains, certainly there is negotiation. Uh, if there's some other streets that is in need or is in dire need of replacement and repair too, we will certainly look at addressing those.
And if you will look back, Councilman Bradford, in that booklet that we prepared with our road improvement, uh, plan, and look in your district and see the streets that we've identified based on our CPI. But if you wanting to make some changes there, just let us know.
Yeah. I mean, to, 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 to recommend streets in my district would be like, you know, throwing up a coin and wherever it lands. I mean, I get more inquiries about.
Right.
Streets and water bills than anything else.
Right, right.
Even crime. But my issue to my, to my constituents is that, uh, unfortunately, we can't spend money twice. And I tell them that, uh, a lot of their street money is up on Hershey D. Wilson.
Absolutely. And, and now we're having to spend more money on Hershey D. Wilson.
Well, I, I say, well, you know, if I can, if I could spend that money over again, I could do more streets. But nevertheless, it's not, it, I, I'm being a little humorous, but I'm just saying the seriousness of some of these people, uh, who, uh, and it's, and they're, and they're not exaggerating. I mean, streets are really bad in Allen Dale, Lakeside, and some, in MLK, specifically, but, but.
And, and I think you would agree that. And working with you, last year, we, we identified a lot of streets in your district that have been done.
Listen, I'm proud of the nineteen or twenty-two streets we got done last, over the, over the last two years in my district.
Yes.
But I'm saying, but you know, and the, uh, the system shows that my district has the worst streets in Streetport. And, uh, but it is what it is. I'm not, I'm not saying anything other than have we started the new, the new go-around.
Yes.
And that's, and bids are out, streets are ready to go, weather permitting, we'll, we'll be sending some, some machines on the streets.
We should be seeing construction in the next thirty to forty-five days. Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. My next, my next inquiry, Mayor, is, uh, in, in his presentation this morning, the chief mentioned that there was going to be an initiative for light eradication.
Yes. Operational Long Hall. And we'll bring Phil up, would you like to?
Sure, I, I would like to engage.
Yes. The chief is not here this afternoon. He, he was trying to take vacation today, but I insisted that he come in for. Yeah, yeah, because he had already set it up the last week, and then that, uh, that, that, that storm came through. So we, we wanted to not mess with the storm because everybody was trying to take care of their citizens. So, anyway.
Yeah, my, my, my question is, uh, is this sort of a T-bone type of initiative, or is this something different than what we saw in the past?
Well, a, and actually, the T-bone initiative has, has never really stopped. That's been a continuation, uh, where our community liaison officers partner with other city entities as well as governmental entities. But, but this is, this is a different kind of operation, and certainly we would never want to do anything that could potentially compromise the operational integrity of, uh, a specific, uh, police action. What we would say is that we think this is going to make a, a tremendous tangible, uh, difference.
And the, the flight is more structured around dilapidated abandoned houses, what could be used for criminal activity versus weed abatement?
Well, well, certainly, this is more of a, a, a traditional law enforcement operation where we're dealing with, and when, and a couple of things that we took into account when we were planning this operation was calls for service as well as total reported part one crime. So I, I think certainly it's not a stretch to say that there's a correlation between those two, uh, items as well as light.
Without revealing anything that, that may be, um, some, somewhat internal, is there any particular neighborhoods or areas that you think would be a priority in initiating some of this, uh, some of, some of, some of the strategies that has been presented?
Absolutely. And that's the unique thing about this particular operation, Operation Long Hall, is it can be tailored, uh, very easily to be put in any area of the city. So again, without talking about geographic specifics as far as date and time that the operation is going to commence, we can very easily move it to any corner, uh, literally, of the city.
And, uh, that's going to be a visible.
Very, very much.
Initiative. That people could say, oh, wow, something is happening.
Very much. So, and I, I do feel comfortable saying, uh, that it is specifically marked units and officers. This particular operation is marked units and officers who are in uniform. Yes, sir.
All right. Thank you. And thank you for that. But my, my, and I want property standards in, in the, in the, uh, CO to, 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 to take this down. In my visit to Arlington, Maple Street, Maple Street runs from Madison all the way to Park. On the, on the south side of Maple, there, there are no residents. But it's, it's just horrible with the weeds and the, and the, and the brushes all over the place. I don't know if that's city property. It's, it's adjacent to Kansas City Southern Lines, and then there's a trucking company over in it. Either, this is what I'm requesting, either if it's city property, I would like for that to be addressed, because the residents are seeing rope is that big and, and all kind of, uh, I think, uh, materials that coming out of there that is un, unknown. And if it's not city property, then the owners of that property need to be cited and made aware that, that this has to be cleaned up. And, and then if they don't do it, then the city will exercise this option to have somebody to do it and, and, and build it.
Absolutely.
But, but I would like to see something done with that west and north, I mean, the south side of Maple Street.
Okay.
Between Madison and Park.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Got it. And, and thank you for bringing it to our attention, because we got, there are so many properties, private and publicly owned. Unless, uh, people tell us, sometimes we don't get to all of it because we're running from King Kong, so to speak, and, but, uh, we appreciate it whenever you bring stuff like that to our attention. And sometimes those properties may have already been cited, and we just need to follow up. But we'll, we'll, we're on it.
Yeah. And, and, and that, that property up on MLK around Nash Street that was identified, uh, something.
Yes.
I think you got onto that real quick, but, uh, but those are the kind of hidden, hidden things that sometimes go unnoticed. But, but it has been said that this is not city-owned property. It's just, it's just, uh,
Yes.
Right-of-way area. But if, if it's not, I'd just like to see it addressed.
Okay.
Just that there. Thank you. Thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir. Thanks.
And my last inquiry is regarding.
Chief.
The, the, uh, downtown airport, I guess, is both airports regarding those hangars.
Yes.
Was there any resolution involved with the, uh, with those, uh, tenants?
We're actually working on it. We sent something out. I'm going to ask Attorney Bradford to address that. We sent something out last Friday. Am I correct about that?
Yes, ma'am. Uh, we spoke, um, with the tenants on last week in person. There was a tenant meeting at the downtown airport. Uh, both regional as well as downtown tenants were, uh, tenants. Uh, we reached some, some agreement, uh, and discussion on that day. And of course, files was sent on last Friday regarding, uh, the future next steps moving forward to help to reach a, an agreeable solution that's in the best interest of the city. That also, uh, of course, takes into consideration some of the concerns of those tenants.
And, and I think I copied the council on that, on that.
Well, but the council has gotten quite a few responses from tenants, actually, enough to look at it.
Probably before that letter, because we just, another just went out Friday.
I haven't gotten any since the letter went out on Friday.
Right, right.
Five or six that I've spoken to since then.
Right.
Have confirmed they've been received of the email.
Right.
And they're interested in moving forward.
And we're moving forward. But I, I did have to have to copy you all, so you could know that we are moving on that, and we're going to come up with, uh, a, a solution that, that's going to be a compromise that will work for both, uh, be within the FAA guidelines in addition to making sure that we're being fair to the, to the tenant.
And that, and that's the word that they, they were saying that they didn't know was fair. And maybe my, my responses have been because it's my district.
Yes.
And that, uh, I've got some.
Right.
Matter of fact, over the weekend in regards to.
Okay.
They acknowledged the, the meeting.
The letter.
In the letter.
Okay.
But they still think it's, uh, it's not, it's not in the interest of them.
Well, they, I, I don't know if they got the letter Friday. See, they got two letters. Uh, so, Councilman Bradford, I'm not sure which letter they're talking about, because the ones, and I, you know, as mayor, I got a bunch of those letters and a bunch of those emails. But after we sent the letter, the last letter that really came from administration last Friday. People have emailed us and said, thank you for considering bringing together this committee that, that really comprise, uh, you know, tenants. And, uh, so we can move ahead and come up with some kind of compromise.
I'm gonna, a couple of that, I think, need to, need some, maybe some, um, some attention. I'm gonna, I'm gonna send them to my clerk and let him, uh, determine whether or not he want to forward them on to you.
Okay. Do that.
All right. Uh, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Mr. Thompson, you have the last word.
Word.